Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Here.
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 She's on the premise.
Fine. Need a motion to adjourn the executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're in executive session. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Second.
We have a motion second to adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. For members of the audience, we are scheduled to start in about fifteen minutes, so we're gonna take a fifteen minute break. Our executive session didn't last as long as we anticipated. Call the meeting back to order. Next item is on the agenda is the invocation performed by Pastor Dale Storm for Florence Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for tonight. We thank you for Florence City Council and the business that they do and how they conduct their business. We just pray, Lord, that you'll be with them tonight as they make the decisions that they have to make for the community. We thank you so much for them wanting to take and do what they do. Father, we thank you so much for this time. We pray now that you would bless this meeting, that everything that's said and done will be for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council should not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. First, Pastor Storm?
Well, I'd like to basically officially thank the mayor and also the city manager for all the help that they tried to do back in November and December to help the Florence Food Bank. We're continuing to operate the way we always have, three days a week, and I just publicly want to thank the city council and everything for the backing that you've done for us to continue to let us feed those who are less fortunate and need the food in the Florence area. Right now, we're continuing to feed here in Florence, plus in Kearney, just like we always have, and again, I want to thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you. Denise?
Denise Colart. The reason I wanted to talk tonight, I want to start a Bonaful basket down here in the town core. I talked to Laura and she talked to Charles, and I got permission to use the senior center as the pickup spot. If you don't know what that is, you go online. It'll be every other week, and you get a basket of fresh fruit and fresh vegetables, and you pay for it online, and then you come on the pickup day and pick them up. It's a way to try and bring fresh stuff to the core. They're doing it out at Anthem, but a lot of people, I feel like maybe they can't get out there to pick the stuff up, so that's why I want to start it downtown. And I just wanted to let all of you know, and thank you, and thank the town manager for letting us, for letting me do this. I'm trying to get people, I've gotta have about fifteen people to get this off the ground, to order the food, so that I can, you know, do this. And then it's just a matter of every other week placing their orders and coming and picking the food up. It's really, I went out to Anthem last Saturday, and the food is exceptional, it really is, and you really get good quality for the amount of money that you're paying. They try to use small farms for a lot of this stuff, not the big conglomerates, to keep, to support the smaller farms. They try to do it locally if they can, and if not, they at least stay with the smaller farms. So it's a food co-op, so what you're doing is your money, you pay your money, and they go out and find the best deals they can for all the fruits and vegetables that they bring us. So I hope it works. I really hope I can do this for the people downtown.
We do too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Woolridge?
Good evening, and I want to thank the council and our town staff for this opportunity to stand before you. I want to begin by, in being a representative of the faith-based community, I want to say that, on a personal note, I stand on a verse of scripture that says, "Trust in the Lord and do good. Dwell in the land and feed on his faithfulness. Delight yourself also in the Lord, and he will give you the desires of your heart." I'm saying that in reference to how it's important that, as leaders anywhere, and in particular as leaders of this great town, it's important that you guard your character, and that you take responsibility for any and all decisions. One must consistently try to do the right thing. And as myself, I'm sure you all don't strive or try or to say that you or pretend to be perfect, but you demonstrate that you're reliable and worthy of trust. I'm referring back to the last meeting in which I was in attendance, and as I look on and since then having been approached so many times by honorable people from this community, I've come to know that everywhere people are desperate for leaders, but they want to be influenced by someone they can trust. And it has to be a person of good character, such as my wife Valerie, who stated after coming on the attack last week that she was gonna stand above the fray, and I'm so proud of her, and along with others in this community, I commend her. And as I go on, I want to say that you have to be someone that wants to positively influence other people. And to do that, you have to model a consistent character and demonstrate solid trust. You have to employ consistency of character, and you have to employ honest communication, and you have to value transparency, and you have to exemplify humility, and you have to demonstrate support of others, especially if you claim to be on the same team, and you have to fulfill your promises. I want to commend Jess for the excellent job you've done, and in my position and having been blessed to be over this state overall, I've heard so many people be envious of this great town staff that we have here. You're the envy of the whole state, and you played a role in that. And I say that in contrast to how you were attacked on last week, you know, your character in particular. I want to say that so many people have approached me, especially the young people I've been blessed to influence, to take an interest in the town government, who look on and they had to ask me, is that the way that you conduct yourself in terms of the behavior demonstrated last week? And I'm not pleased, but those that do stand above the fray, I commend you, and I want you to know that I pray for you. And to the community, those of you who have approached me and asked me about a recall, I do support the recall. God bless you.
Next item?
Sorry, public hearing. Public hearing on a text amendment application by the Town of Florence amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances and first reading of ordinance number 593-13, and ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances titled, "Fifteen Land Usage, Chapter 150 Development Code, Section 150.01031, defined words, 150.047 District Use Regulation Tables A, 150.047 District Use of Regulation Tables B, 150.048 Rules of Agriculture, RA-10, 150.049 Rural Agricultural, RA-4, 150.04.064 Light Industrial, LI, and 150.065 Heavy Industrial, HI. Mark Eckhoff, our planning director, will be providing you with a brief presentation.
Mark?
Mayor, council. Good evening. I think Lisa actually had a tougher time doing the introduction. The explanation is pretty straightforward. We actually have spoken about this text amendment in a previous work session, and as you know, we've been trying to bring some of these text amendments to you over the last few months, kind of breaking them up a little bit, so you're not hit with a ton of them at one time. This one is particularly exciting one. We're touching on a few different things in this amendment. Just to give you the highlights, though, really what we're doing in this amendment is we're trying to make official some interpretations that we've had, land use interpretations that we've had regarding our code before, particularly related to correctional facilities and similar uses, trying to clean up some definitions, some conflicting definitions, and lack of definitions that were in the code, minimizing the opportunity for ongoing interpretations on some issues, providing some clarification regarding church uses and public school land uses. Over the years, there's been some changes at the federal level and the state level regarding those, and so there's some added clarity on those. And then also removing some redundancies that were in the code, so in the section versus in the table, there was a lot of unnecessary repetition. So I'd be happy to elaborate on any of those particular things. I do think one of the most significant items on there is dealing with the correctional facilities to ensure that they are located as we have indicated in the past through not only my interpretation, but through the formal, you know, reinterpretation of the council and also the council action on the CCA conditional use permit a few years ago. But it's definitely a nice thing to do in the code here. But with that, tonight is a public hearing only on this item. I'd be happy to address any items, provide any clarifications that you may need.
Part of the public hearing. Does any council members have any question? Mark? Okay, at this time I'll open the public hearing. Does any member of the council have anything that they would like to say, references? Any member of the council have anything they want to say?
These are coming at us in little snapshots, right? How many more do we have left to or through?
Mayor, council member Saliya specifically. We also wanted to still come back and address code regulation pertaining to fences and walls, and we have some ideas about that. There was a few things that came up on that and a couple of issues that developed. Definitely want to address that, and since you're asking also, I know that I'd like to come back to the planning commission and the council regarding an amendment on the clarification for the age of manufactured homes, which was something that got removed during the 2005 update to the code. Previously, our code had allowed that there was an age restriction on new manufactured homes brought into the community, and we wanted to go ahead and introduce some new language addressing that again. And then also, one of the more significant ones also that we're still working on and requires a lot of input from legal is the one dealing with the adult businesses. And then after that, we'll probably get to the point where we'll have a work session on maybe some other ideas that we're thinking about. The code is something, I think it's, we should look at it like it's a live document, you know, we'd never want to adopt it and then just say, oh, nothing ever, should ever change. As we use it day to day, and we look at scenarios that come up, we always find opportunities where there can be improvements or clarification, so.
So a few more?
A few more now, and then probably down the road, probably we'll discuss some other opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Item nine is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of accepting the register of demand ending February 28, 2013, in the amount of $1,248,612.76. Item B, approval of the motion to rescind resolution number 1379-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the town clerk and entitled, "2013 to 2023 Land Use Assumptions, Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and Impact Fee Study for the Town of Florence, Arizona." Item C, approval of resolution number 1389-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain documents filed with the town clerk and entitled, "The 2013-2023 Land Use Assumptions, Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and Impact Fee Study for the Town of Florence, Arizona." Item D, adoption of resolution number 1385-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the re-subdivision of Felix Farms, requiring the provisions of an infrastructure improvement assurance or withholding of recordation to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements, establishing a deadline for required improvements to be completed and authorizing execution by the town manager of all supporting documents. Item E, adoption of resolution number 1387-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merle Ranch, Unit 22A, requiring the provisions of the infrastructure improvement assurance or withholding of recordation to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements, establishing a deadline for required improvements to be completed and authorizing the execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item F, authorization of resolution number 1388-13, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merle Ranch, Unit 22B, requiring the provisions of the infrastructure improvement assurance or withholding of recordation to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of the required improvements, establishing a deadline for all required improvements to be completed and authorizing execution by the town manager of all supporting documents. Mayor, member of council, that is your consent agenda for April, or for March 18, 2013.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda for discussion? Any member of the public? Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
I second. We have a motion second to adopt the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 10, new business. Item A, discussion approval, disapproval of notice of intent to increase water and sewer fees, and the development of new fees associated with the deposit, connection fees, service fees, utility rates, and fees. Becky Galen, the finance director, will be addressing this with the town council.
Mayor and town council, back in 2009, Economist.com provided us the utility rate study for all the town's utilities, water, sanitation, and our wastewater. Again, in 2011, we had them come back in and take a look again at the wastewater and water to make sure that everything was on track with that, and they reaffirmed the rate schedule that was set forth. We have to, by statutory requirements, post an intent to increase water, wastewater rates and fees. So this is the first process of it. The financial impact is a five percent or seven cents per 1,000 gallons for water, and a base meter charge increase of five percent or a dollar two. The residential sewer rates will increase 10 percent or 36 cents per 1,000 gallons, and the base meter charge will increase 10 percent or $1.54. The whole premise of this incremental increase was not to make it difficult on the residents because of the amount of infrastructure projects we have out there. We continue to still have those projects that have to be completed and funded, either through rates and fees or by borrowing money. At some point, we also may have to do some financing of these capital projects, but the rates are set to accommodate debt service for these. So this is the annual increase. I did a quick calculation. The water revenue amount will be about $145,000 of increase overall, and sewer revenues $303,000. So again, this is just the notification and to set a public hearing for the ordinance to increase fees on May 6, 2013.
This is just setting the, everything a motion to be hit, so that the public hearings can be held. Is that correct? Information for the council?
Yes.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like to ask Becky?
Well, it says on the agenda it calls for action, but that must be a mistake, right?
The action is just by motion to adopt the notice of intention to modify the existing water and sewer rates and base fees and any other charges, which there are none. It's just the rates and base fees.
Councilman Hawkins? Yeah, we're just, we are required to provide a public notice of an intent.
Oh, okay.
Whether you do it or not later, you know.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think that in the past increases, you've put together kind of a guesstimate, basic household increase, what's it gonna cost our everyday taxpayer. I don't know if you've prepared one for this one, but it might be nice to have one for.
Yes, it's right there in your agenda item, inserted in there. We can go through that whenever the public hearing is, or if you'd like to read it right now, I can go ahead.
If you can read it right now, so I don't have to thumb through that.
Okay. On a $5,000 gallon usage per month, the overall increase will probably be about $4.39. On the summer billing, it's about $2.66. So if you're gone and you're just leaving your water turned on, that's what the increase is gonna be. On 15,000 gallons, $7.91, and this is only water and sewer. If you use 22,000 gallons, the overall increase will be about $10.97. So those are our high water users, and as you know, we have a three-tiered system for water usage.
Thank you.
I just wish that we could figure out some way to drop the sewer rate. People are, I am continuously getting bombarded with people complaining about the sewer rate.
I know, but if you look at the capital improvement plan, you can see that we have a sewer plant, a 2.5 mechanical sewer plant going to be provided in future years, 14, 15. The overall cost is about in excess of $13 million. So this money is accumulating, waiting to pay for that debt service, along with the other two debt services we have with WIFA.
I realize it. I just wish that we could do something about it.
I know.
Need a motion? Unless anybody else has any other discussion? Hearing none, need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt a notification of intent to increase fees and development of new fees associated with deposits, connection fees, service fees, utility rates, and fees.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt a notification of intention to increase fees and development of new fees associated with deposits, connection fees, service fees, utility rates, and fees, which will be brought up in May of this year, coming year. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Department reports, we have your reports here by the department heads. Anybody have any question they'd like to ask on, any department head that's here?
I don't know which department it would be, but I've just got a question on the Channel 11. I'm wondering if we could have a directory on there stating at what times the different commissions will be shown or council meetings, because, you know, people have to sit there all day if they want to see something and hope that they see it.
We'll make sure we put something together.
Okay, thank you. Like a schedule or?
On our website, that will advertise it, and as well as advertising it on Channel 11.
Okay, thank you.
Ruben?
Yeah, I had one issue from this past week, and it had to deal with the tumbleweeds that's over on the west side of town. And Wayne Costa's group got in there within 24 hours and got that area cleaned up. But the concern is, is the empty lots that are on the west part of town, down Butte Avenue, continue to grow tumbleweeds, and every time there's a heavy storm or a dust storm that comes in, they get pushed into that area up against the residential walls, and it's gonna continue to cause problems and possible concerns for fire. If we can check with the owners of that land, I don't know if it's us or if it's with some private owner, and see what we could do about dealing with the different tumbleweeds and other types of issues that we have over there in those lots.
I think San Carlos irrigation enforces that, and you might check with them.
Are they still, is that area, do you know, Wayne, if that still falls under agriculture?
Councilman Montano, yes, this still falls under agriculture, and I believe it's an out-of-town owner.
Aren't they required, if it is farming, that they have to keep that area clear of weeds?
I'm sorry, sir.
They have to keep that clean, don't they?
Oh, yes. Yes, they do, because it's considered noxious weed, so they do. And I believe code enforcement was informed, so I think they're working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any department head want to think, say anything about their reports? Ray?
Thanks, Mayor Rankin, members of the council. As you know, two weeks ago, we unfortunately had to temporarily postpone the annual fishing derby at Heritage Park. I know there's been a lot of questions and phone calls. I wanted to just put that out there. The fishing derby has been rescheduled for April 5. Press release will be forthcoming through the PIO's office, and we'll do our best to get everybody informed on that. I know there's a lot of questions hanging. Also, I wanted to share that through the help of the vice mayor, put on an excellent show at the park Saturday for the car show. Also went out and attended the Air Model Park Show out there as well. That was very well attended, and then my wife and I made our way up to the big spring fling in Anthem, where they had a great crowd up there too. So just wanted to let everybody know about some of the great events going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, call the public, second call to the public for public comment on anything we've done tonight or anything you'd like to say. I want to call up a couple of young ladies, get up the microphone. They're under public comment. Right over here.
What am I supposed to say?
No, well, I'm gonna ask you some questions.
Okay.
Under the public comment. You made a request of me earlier tonight, okay, and I volunteered you all. All six of us, or seven of us, they'd like to have our picture.
We come from a school.
Tell us why, and introduce yourselves.
I'm Presley Barnett. We're, I'm Ashley Warren, and we're both from Combs High School. It's out in Santan Valley. For our government class, we're seniors, and for our government class, our teacher really wants us to experience real, I guess, public things, I guess, how laws and, I don't know, just she wants us to experience this stuff, and it's a school project, so we need proof that we actually came here, 'cause she doesn't believe us, you know, so.
Future politicians. Nobody believes a politician. So you'd like to take our picture, right?
If we could get a picture with, yeah, with you guys.
I think that'd be a good deal. After the meeting, we all meet down here and get our picture taken. picture taken, they can take it back to prove that they were here.
Please.
Anybody have any problem with that? Ladies, thank you very much. Anybody else in the public? Call the council. Tommy?
Nothing at this time.
Ruben?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
Yes, I have several things. Number one, I'd like to thank all the people in this town that supported the yard sale and museum had because they count on that every year and they did real well. The second thing I'd like to do is thank quite a few people, our town staff, in particular also Ray, our Parks and Rec department. I'd like to thank the fire department for showing up. I'd like to thank the police department for showing up. Two, the car show we put on. We had people saying you couldn't do it, wouldn't make it. Well, guess what? The first car show in this town had over 65 cars come. It was a great showing. It's the start of an annual event, which will happen against next year. I want to thank everybody, especially Parks and Rec, because they put a lot of work into that and trying to help us. But the fire department, police department showing up and town staff were working originally with it. It was a great show, if you saw it, a lot of beautiful cars.
Say thank you to all the community members who continue to support the decisions that we make and especially to those in Anthem who I had a lot of contact with a couple of weeks ago who were really grateful for the decisions that we have been making as far as sanitation and utility. So I'd just like to thank the community for supporting me and the decisions that I make because it's really encouraging to know that I'm doing something right for you.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Tara?
I have nothing.
I can tell you Saturday was busy. What we anticipated years ago is going to be happening, I think it's going to be happening more often as we go through here. Has been explained today, we had the car show that was on Saturday, we had the air modelers that were going, we had the spring fling and also the town recreation basketball was going. How many kids did you got in there, Ray?
If I'm not mistaken, somewhere on the order of 40 to 45 kids at a given time.
And quadruple that by people that go watch them.
That's true. We do get a lot of parental involvement and stuff like that.
Right. And Saturday was a very busy day for me as I attended all four functions. And we're going to have more of that and that is from being a community and that's what a community is about and that's what I really like to see. It's nice to see Florence is on the positive growth and the positive, good things are happening here. We just want to keep it going that way. And all of us, all in the council, are working for that. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn to executive session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Folks, we're going to be in executive session don't know how long, then we'll come out and adjourn. But before we go to executive session, can we have our picture taken, please?